Everybody. Oh, he's like a coldness.
How do I mute?
Hmm?
How do I mute right here?
What am I, mute?
Yeah, I, oh, I'll check with April. Maybe she's not putting them in Dropbox. I guess I didn't realize. Are they just being emailed to you, like a link?
Hmm, like a PDF file.
Hi, everybody. We can go ahead and get the meeting.
Hello.
Hi, hi. Okay, so we'll go ahead and we will call our February Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes.
Were there any changes that needed to be made?
So.
If there are no changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our January 12th meeting?
Removed.
Second.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Lutz and seconded by Commissioner Norman to approve the minutes from our January 12th meeting. I'll do a roll call, starting with Lutz.
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Stewart? Is he here?
Not present.
Okay. Commissioner Schrock?
Maybe we should just, okay, maybe back up a little bit and do a, just do a attendance.
Okay. Um, I'm not able to see who is on the Zoom call right now, so, um, go ahead and we'll just take attendance. Uh, I know Commissioner Burrows is not in attendance, but is Commissioner Stewart? Commissioner Schrock?
Only ones I can see, Melissa, are myself and Jana.
Okay, so I think we'll pause here for a minute and, um, investigate the call.
Jay, this is Brad.
My mistake, I see Brad. I see you, Brad.
Aye.
Hello?
Hello.
So we need one more, I think, for a quorum?
Do we have Commissioner Salas Ramirez or Commissioner Clenner?
Don't see them on the Zoom.
Yeah, um, I was told by, um, Clenner, Salas Ramirez, Stewart, um, Schrock, that they would be in attendance, and I'm not sure why they're not coming up, but we don't have a quorum, so we can't continue without a quorum.
Yeah.
Hey, Holly, help me out. Tell me what a quorum, what our quorum is.
We have nine members on the Planning Commission, so we need five present in order to conduct business. We've never not had a quorum in the time that I've been here.
Wait, the four said they were coming that aren't here.
Got some phone numbers there, Holly? Can you make a couple calls quick?
I'll read a shock right now.
Okay, thanks, Jana.
Thanks, Jan.
Yep.
So how many do we need? Two?
Right now, we have Commissioner Lindberg, Commissioner Norman, Commissioner Lutz, and myself. So we need one other.
One more, okay.
I'm just gonna just make sure nobody's locked out upstairs.
Yeah, initially.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Clenner said he was coming in person, but he changed his mind because he had a, an issue.
Rita didn't answer, but I just sent her a text to see, maybe she'll answer quick.
Thanks, Jana.
You're welcome. Oh, she said she's having trouble logging in.
Yeah, this time.
Maybe that's the case with others.
We just sent a password and a code for the meeting this time. There wasn't a link. Um, she'd have to just log on to Zoom and then enter that information for the meeting.
Yeah, and I just clicked on the link, so.
Oh, the link did work for you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's the same one that we always use.
That worked for me, too.
But Holly, I didn't have a link. I, I had to use a, a meeting number and a passcode.
Okay, so it did work for you then to do it that way?
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll just wait.
It worked for me just to log in with your link.
What's that?
I said it worked for me just to log in with your link.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, that's right. I sent one to you, too. Nobody?
I didn't see anybody. Can you see anybody in Martin's sidewalk? North side, south side.
I don't know if it's proper Planning Commission protocol to see if anybody has a good joke. I'm not a comedian, so.
Rita said she just got locked out of her email, so I'm gonna text the link to her and tell her she can use her phone.
Yeah, I've used different devices before. That should work.
Yeah, yep, it works, or should work anyway.
If you've got the app or whatever. Well, I guess you could go on your browser and connect to.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that help.
No, no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Dun 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 dun. I'm up for cheap entertainment.
Hopefully Rita can get something to work here.
Right. Technology, it's great when it works perfectly.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Holly?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you. Um, Rita said she's waiting to be invited in.
Oh, okay.
She's on her husband's iPad.
Okay, I'll enter. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Schrock, can you hear us okay?
My screen, Melissa, says that she is connecting to audio.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Me can. Oh, my God. Sorry, I had to use my husband's iPad, and I don't know how to use it. You make a great Curtis Schrock. I said, they're probably trying to, they're probably trying to figure out who it is. Oh, perfect. Thank you, Jana.
Wonderful. So Commissioner Schrock, we'll get you updated to, um, where we are at at this point. Uh, we went ahead and, um, started the meeting. I asked the commissioners, um, if they had an opportunity to review the minutes from our January 12th on Planning Commission meeting. And if you did, did you see any changes that would need to take place?
Not that I, no.
Okay, wonderful. So we had a motion from Commissioner Lutz and a second from Commissioner Norman to approve the minutes from our January 12th Planning Commission meeting. So I'll go ahead and I will, um, take a vote individually, and we will move forward with our open public hearing. So, um, Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
With a unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. So it looks like we have one agenda item on, um, tonight's agenda here for an open, open public hearing to consider a petition for amendment of an existing conditional use permit from Faith Evangelical Free Church to add a 60 by 40-foot open-sided pavilion to the property at 1812 Street Southwest. Holly, can you fill us in?
Uh, yes. So as noted, this is a, an application for an amendment to an existing conditional use permit. Um, Faith Evangelical Free Church is located on a large parcel on 1812 Street Sou- 12th Street Southwest. Um, that parcel is zoned R2 multifamily residential district, and that is the reason why a conditional use, uh, is required in that area. Um, our city ordinance allows churches as conditional uses in R1 and R2 districts. Um, on your, in your materials, uh, the conditional uses allowed in an R2 district are listed. Um, Part G, um, notes churches, synagogues, synagogues and the like, and then it goes on to give some additional guidance, um, for using, um, uh, existing buildings and some other information about what would be allowed um, in, uh, as a conditional use in that instance. Um, the surrounding uses in that area are primarily, uh, multifamily and single-family residential. Um, uh, 12th Street Southwest is, uh, somewhat, um, of a main corridor, uh, busy road. Um, the, uh, parties, uh, within 350 feet of that property, or property owners within that, uh, within 350 feet of that parcel were notified. Uh, somebody doesn't have their mute on, so I can hear you talking. Um, so the parcel, uh, the parties, uh, parcels around that area were notified, um, of the, uh, conditional use permit amendment. Um, I got one response back, uh, from Charlie Fawver. He was just curious about where the pavilion would go, and I sent that, uh, to him, uh, the drawings that we had from the church or from the petitioner. Um, and, uh, no response was, uh, he didn't, he didn't follow up with any response. Or any concerns. Um, Section 11.56 of Division 1 regarding conditional use permits uh, states that before granting a conditional use permit, the Planning Commission shall consider the effect of the proposed land, um, uh, the effect of the proposed conditional use permit on the land, including land values, as well as the preservation of natural features. Among other things, the Planning Commission shall make the following findings where available, applicable. Um, the use will not create an excessive burden on existing parks, schools, streets, and other public facilities and utilities which serve or are proposed to serve the area. Um, and I should note that each time we do an amendment to a conditional use permit, it's as if they're doing a new conditional use permit, but I will go over what's existing as well. Um, the use will be sufficiently compatible or separated by distances or screening from adjacent agricultural or residentially zoned uses, um, so that they will not be depreciated in value. The structure and site shall have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent residential properties. The use, in the opinion of the Planning Commission, is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and to the existing land use. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning chapter and the district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. The use will not cause traffic hazard or congest, congestion. Existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected because of curtailment or of customer trade, um, because of noise, glare, or general insatlieness. The use will not result in unnecessary, unnecessary destruction of natural features. And then there are other conditions that the Planning Commission may consider, um, regarding possible adverse effects, um, which would include geographical area involved, whether the use will depreciate surrounding area, as noted earlier, uh, character of the surrounding area, the demonstrated need for the use, and whether the use will cause any kind of nuisance to the neighborhood. The Planning Commission, in addition, may impose other, uh, additional conditions considered necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding area or the city as a whole. So a pretty broad, um, ability to, uh, require conditions that are related to the, the project that is proposed. Um, the petitioner, uh, it hasn't, the existing CUP, so in the past, we, um, somewhat memorialized our CUPs in our meeting minutes. So in this instance, I didn't have a list or a specific document that, um, described the existing CUP. So I did, um, draw up a, um, uh, like a proposed CUP based on what our records, um, indicated, and so that's in your materials as well, and I'm just putting that up on the screen now. Um, so the addition, the original conditions when the, the church was, uh, constructed, um, required that the church site be located per MINDOT requirements. So there's apparently a, uh, original proposal that was modified somewhat per MINDOT. Uh, the hard, that there was a hard surface for off-street parking, which they have, that there's a landscaping, or that their landscaping and open space meet 40% minimum, um, with screening to residences to the south. Um, they definitely meet the 40% minimum. Um, that there's a landscaping plan for the overall site, uh, that site drainage was approved by the city engineer, um, which the construction wouldn't have happened without that kind of review. And that the site development addressing access for emergency vehicles was approved by the Austin Fire Chief again. Um, construction wouldn't have been approved without, uh, that criteria being met. And then I just included the minutes, uh, that went along with that, um, to give a, some additional description. Does anybody want me to go through the minutes, or does that summary, uh, is that summary sufficient of the existing CUP?
I'm fine with the summary.
Okay.
I think so, too.
I am a smart.
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. So then, um, I'm just gonna go down to the, the attachments that I was sent, uh, showing the proposed site. So this is what the amendment would, uh, references, is just the addition of this, uh, pavilion. And, uh, the, from my understanding, it's to be used for church activities only. Um, it's 40 by 60, which I actually did not check to see if this was to scale, but the, um, the petitioners are here to answer any questions that you might have. And then there's another, uh, uh, rendition of the, the proposed structure, showing that would be open on the sides and, uh, have a roof. Um, and that in talking to the petitioners, again, it was, um, something that they thought would be beneficial to their parishioners, um, and enhance their, um, their mission and their work as a, as a church. Does anybody, oh, and then I have, hang on a second. So, um, some recommendations, just, uh, that off-street parking be accommodated as needed. In this instance, it doesn't really appear that additional parking would be required. This would be serving the, their regular parishioners, so it shouldn't increase the number of people, um, that would normally be in the church. Um, the property coverage is still, uh, would be about 19% coverage. They're limited to 40%. Um, we don't have any zoning standards for the appearance of an open-sided pavilion or shelter, so there's, um, no real guidance there about what the, you know, how it should appear. Um, the commission, but, you know, the commission may make any, any reasonable conditions related to the proposal. Um, and then there's a suggested motion. This would be a final decision, uh, unless it were appealed to counsel. Um, the notices that went out had a uh, line that allowed the neighbors to, um, appeal the decision if they should decide to within 15 days of our meeting. So it could go either way. I mean, they could appeal a, you know, an, a approval or appeal a denial. But again, I haven't heard anything from any of the, the people we sent notices to. And, uh, there's a list in your materials as well of those who were, who were noticed, as well as a public notice. So do the commissioners have any questions and then, um, or go ahead. I'll, I'll put it, I'll send it back to our chair.
So I was also gonna ask if our commissioners have any questions, or if the petitioner would like to speak or add any additional information that Holly has not covered.
And then you would just state your name and your address if, if you, if you wanted to add anything, or if the commissioners have any questions?
I don't have any questions, and, uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with this request at all, given the geographic characteristics of that area. That thing is so far from anything that I just don't see it as an issue at all, even with regards to any noise or light at night or anything, and I'm, uh, I'm well-prepared to make a motion to approve as it's requested, unless anyone else has any issue.
Yeah, I live, I live two blocks from the church, uh, excuse me, Mark, um, and they, they are, seem to be extremely good neighbors, where there's no disturbances in the neighborhood there. It's, it's, they're good to have there.
So the first speaker was Commissioner Lutz, and that was Commissioner Lindberg?
I can add on behalf of the church, too, that, um,
Is this, uh, can you state your name?
Oh, yeah, this is Mark Burelli, and I'm representing the church and submitted the, the request for this, um, a review of the pavilion, and, um, I serve as the church's property chair for their property committee. So one thing I was just gonna add is that, um, to try to avoid any unnecessary noise from any program that's being presented, um, in this pavilion, the, um, if there's any speakers brought out there, the, the the sound is gonna be projected to the east towards 12th Street. Um, and that way, you know, the, the homes that are further to the west will not be, you know, hearing as much of the noise, you know, from any event that's going on.
Uh, question for you, Mark. What times of the day are you expecting to use this pavilion?
That's gonna vary, um, Brad, because they, uh, it could be used for, um, outdoor services, which would be predominantly in the morning. Um, there would be some other more, possibly some evening, uh, music-oriented worship services that we might have periodically, but they'd also be open to our church members to use for, say, a wedding reception or a wedding, outdoor wedding, or, um, you know, the family graduation gathering or a family reunion. Some things of those natures would fall more into more probably midday or in the early afternoon, so, you know, it'll get, and then we have youth programming during the summer months, too, that will utilize it more towards late morning through to early afternoon, so.
Uh, Mr. Burelli, I just have a question for clarification. So I understood that this would be used only for church activities, but you would be renting it out to members for like graduations and things like that, or do you already use the church for that kind of thing?
We will not be renting it at all. Um, there'll be a scheduling to confirm its use, but it'll only be used by church events and church-approved gatherings.
Okay, okay. So it'd be up to the commission whether to require that as a condition of the conditional use permit?
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? We did have a motion that was made by Commissioner Lutz to, um, to approve an amendment of the existing conditional use permit for the Faith Evangelical Free Church for a, um, open-side pavilion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I believe that was Commissioner Schrock who seconded the motion? Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll take a vote. Uh, Commissioner Schrock?
Wait, uh, I need specific conditions. Can you list the condition? Oh, in the motion? If there are any, if there aren't any conditions, then I think, does Mr. Byram want to weigh in on it, or?
Do we need a specific condition? That it be church events or church-approved events?
Well, the conditional use permit is allowed for, uh, for churches and, and religious institutions. So that would imply that it would be used for churches and religious-oriented purposes. Um, if, if it's gonna be used for a broader category of things, I think that at a staff level, we need to discuss what implications that might have. we need to discuss what implications that might have, because in a residential area, we can approve churches, but we can't approve, you know, venues for, you know, public gatherings that are unrelated to the church. So I don't think that condition has to be in it, because the conditional use permit is for a church and religious purposes. It's just whether, we'll have additional conversations later with Mr. Burelli or anyone from the church about implications that might come about if it starts to be used more widely. The one thing that I heard tonight that might be a condition is that there was a representation that any amplified sound systems would be faced to the east to minimize sound to the neighbors on the other three sides of the property. And so you may choose to include a condition that any amplified sound be placed such as to face east, if that's in your mind necessary to protect the neighbors from noise concerns.
Thank you for that clarification.
So Commissioner Lutz, did you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the amendment to the conditional use permit with one condition, that any amplified sound faced to the east to minimize any noise on the neighboring properties.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. A motion's been made by Commissioner Lutz and seconded by Commissioner Schrock to amend the existing conditional use permit to also include a condition that amplified sounds face the east to minimize the sound for the conditional use permit for the Faith Evangelical Free Church. I'll go ahead and I will make, we'll take a vote with Commissioner Schrock.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
With a unanimous vote of aye, motion carries. If you don't have any other business, I will take a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
We have no, nothing else?
So. Can I second?
Okay, a motion's been made by Commissioner Lutz and seconded by Commissioner Lindberg to adjourn this evening's meeting. Go ahead and take a vote. Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Norman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
With unanimous vote of aye, motion carries, and we adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Yes.
Yeah, 'cause I couldn't get logged on. I was like.